Just want to welcome everybody. We're actually, surprisingly, running a few minutes ahead of schedule. But I believe just about everybody is here, and I want to go ahead and get things started. I am Chito Vela, councilmember for District 4 and sponsor of the Grace Act. Again, thanks to unanimous on city council. And it's not enough. I wish we could do more to protect abortion rights, to protect reproductive rights here in Austin, but I think it's as much as we can do. And we will continue to look for other avenues to try to fight for abortion rights. And more than anything, I do not want women, people who try to self-manage an abortion, injure themselves, hurt themselves, to have any hesitancy seeking medical care after something goes wrong. I don't want somebody who is bleeding, is injured, to be like, "No, I don't want to go to prison. I don't want to go to the emergency room." Because that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect health. We're trying to prevent injuries, and we're trying to make Austin as supportive and as safe of a city for abortion rights, for reproductive rights, as we possibly can. I'm so happy that it passed, and I'm so happy that so many other cities have picked up the Grace Act and ran with it. San Antonio should be sponsoring it soon. El Paso tried to pass it, but it narrowly failed, unfortunately, over there. But we have Nashville, Atlanta, Waco now, that's going to be trying to put it on the Waco Council agenda. And so, you know, there's this misperception out there that, you know, Austin is, that Texas is some kind of overwhelmingly anti-abortion state, and that's just not the reality. Texas has been, I think, shook by what has just happened on the Supreme Court and the full ramifications of no rape or incest exceptions. We're looking at, again, The New York Times had a story, the councilmember Fuentes mentioned on the dais where, again, an 11-year-old girl who was raped had to go out of the state to seek care, seek healthcare. And that's extremely, extremely horrible and unacceptable, and we need to push back against that as much as we possibly can. And this is just the first step. Thank you so much to the many members of the Texas Legislature who are here, who have fought hard and who I know are ready to fight even harder this next session to try to push back against the anti-abortion bills that have been pushed through the Texas Legislature. Thank you so much to my council colleagues who are also here, standing in support, the unanimous passage of the Grace Act. Thank you to all the nonprofit organizations and the advocates who helped us with the promotion, the drafting. So many people have to come together to make something like this happen, and I'm just deeply grateful to all those involved. And I'll pass it right now, but I also have to thank councilmember Vanessa Fuentes and her fight back, fight back for reproductive health agenda. We're going to keep coming with more resolutions to make sure that Austin is as safe and protective of abortion rights and reproductive rights as it can possibly be. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give it up for passing the Grace Act. Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Fuentes, Austin City Councilwoman representing Southeast Austin. Today, we're putting in the work, and we're fighting back for reproductive freedoms. We're fighting back for Austinites. Our actions today will shape the future of Austin and position us as a local government willing to go on the offensive. But make no mistake, there will be some, Texas GOP, who will not hesitate to try and delegitimize today's progress, nor will they stop at our reproductive freedoms. They've already spent decades chipping away at our most fundamental rights, and they won't give up so easily. But then again, neither will we. When they attack our bodily autonomy, we will fight back. When they go after trans rights and marriage equality, we will fight back. Even though we are in this dark time of the country, in our country, there is one promise that I can make: There are more of us than there are of them. And this isn't just about protecting Austinites. It's about creating a national movement. As my colleague just mentioned, there are other cities throughout the country that fight at the local level to protect our constituents. And we'll continue to build that movement, and we'll continue to do that hard work. And while our federal government continues to stay idle, it's up to us to put in the work and do everything possible to protect the communities that we care and represent.
Good afternoon. I am Austin City Councilmember Paige Ellis, and I am proud to represent District 8 in Southwest Austin. In a state with a high maternal mortality rate, lack of sex education, contraceptives, little access to healthcare, little access to parental leave, a failing foster care system can't keep the lights on, but easy to access an AR-15, the idea that outlawing abortion care as an aspect of being pro-life is simply not true. It is about controlling the lives and livelihoods of women, trans men, non-binary and intersex folks, and other people. As a 38-year-old newly-married woman, I don't know that I want to start a family in Texas, because doing so can be a threat to my own health. We are already seeing the stories of pregnant people fleeing Texas to secure abortion in another state, causing them to miss work, to miss out on pay, to miss time with the families and the responsibilities that they already have. I don't know that I would want to start a business in Texas if this is how my employees would access healthcare. When we passed my resolution to provide amicus brief support after the passage of SB8, we asked the business community to be publicly vocal in opposition to this law, the way that they have been in opposition to laws the legislature passed that disenfranchise voters. At the time, no one stepped forward, but now, the moment is here. We are seeing businesses boldly step up for their employees. Let me be clear: Abortion is healthcare. And we need leaders at all levels of government, from the city council, to the state legislature, to the governor's mansion, and to the White House, to stand with our constituents who overwhelmingly support people having access to abortion.
Good afternoon. I'm councilmember Kathy Tovo. I have the privilege of representing city council District 9, and am also very grateful to my colleagues for bringing these measures. Really grateful to those who came today, who emailed, or who called, or who came down to council today to stand up for reproductive freedom. My mother was a lifelong Republican, and she was also a very strong supporter of abortion access. And as a teen, I remember once asking her about that, and she described, in her response, she described to me why. She was a nurse, and early in her career, she worked in a hospital prior to the passage of the Roe v. Wade decision. And my mother described for me the night when she and others tried to save the life of a woman who had tried to give herself an abortion with a wire hanger. "Never again," my mother said, "should we be in a situation in this country where women do not have the right to access a medically safe, legal abortion. Every woman should have a right to make that choice for herself." You know, I don't think my mom could have imagined a country, a world in which abortion became illegal again, and I know I sure never did either. Abortion is healthcare. People who get pregnant must have access to medically safe abortions. Each of us has a right to bodily autonomy, and the Supreme Court, this Supreme Court, just got it wrong. Our city council, as all of you know, has a long history of supporting reproductive freedom, reproductive rights, and we're going to continue to fight back against our state and against any kinds of federal action. We're going to do what we can at the local level to help those who need assistance and help them seek abortion care without fear of retribution. As I listened to the testimony this morning of the many folks who came out to talk, several of whom shared their personal stories, I couldn't help but think of Sarah Weddington, who, as you know, argued the Roe v. Wade decision when she was newly out of law school. Sarah Weddington passed away six months before that final decision. She was not a person who minced words or held back, and I believe that she would tell us, were she here today, not to give up. I know she believed in Austin, in the power of our community, and were she here, I believe she would urge us to continue this work of coming together, doing what we need to do to protect health and bodily autonomy, and to do as I know we will do in Austin, to continue to raise our voices for change and for justice. Thank you. I'd like to introduce my colleague, councilmember Poole.
Thanks, councilmember Tovo, and thank you, mayor and colleagues, for all the work on the bills we passed today, the four different resolutions. Thanks for bringing these measures and for jumping on these issues so quickly. And thank you to all who are here today, out of concern, for the radical action the U.S. Supreme Court took just weeks ago. SCOTUS, in effect, has robbed women of autonomy, robbed women of autonomy as equal beings in the eyes of the law. That's not just radical. It's not just unprecedented. It's contemptible, and it cannot be allowed to stand. In Dobbs v. Jackson, the Supreme Court of the United States made the unprecedented move of striking down a fundamental constitutional right, a constitutional right that protects women as equal citizens. Without that protection, there is nothing constraining the Texas Legislature, which has become the dictator of forced births. A fetus is a cluster of cells with a potential of life. The Texas Legislature says that potential for life is so important that it matters more than the health and safety of an actual live person, the person carrying the fetus. But if that is true, then why is there so much neglect by the state in terms of providing support and services during pregnancy and, in particular, in the years after birth? Why is the state not spending its time and resources figuring out how parents and children, what they need to have safe and productive lives? The city of Austin is doing everything we can. That's why, that's what makes it so clear that this really is about controlling women. It's about controlling women and our bodies. No one is forcing anyone to have an abortion, but the state is going to force women to give birth. In Texas, as just happened in Ohio, the government will force an 11-year-old child who has been raped to carry a child when her body is really not even mature enough to handle a pregnancy. Last September, Governor Abbott said the solution to all this was to put a stop to rape. How's that going so far? So, Austin, here's what I want the people of Austin to know. While the Texas Legislature uses its time and resources to create a regime of forced birth, I am so proud and grateful that in Austin, we will not be terrorizing doctors or subjugating women. And I stand four-square on that proposition in support of you and your right to make your own healthcare reproductive choices. Thank you. I think I'm handing to the mayor.
Wait, let me pass it over to Ann first.
Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you. My name is councilmember Ann Kitchen, District 5. I just want to add my voice to the voice of my colleagues and thank my colleagues and councilmember Vela for bringing the Grace Act. It is a fundamental act, and I'm proud that we all passed it today. For me, it's pretty simple. This is a matter of healthcare, and it's a matter of equity. The decision about whether to bear a child or to access abortion is a personal, it's complex, it is a difficult decision. The state has no right, the state has no right to women, to their healthcare providers, to families, what that decision should be. It is a complex, very personal situation with so many different circumstances involved. And so, for me, I've spent my life working with Planned Parenthood, working on access to healthcare, working on access to LARQ and other contraceptives, and I am proud to be part of this effort. It is the least we can do at the city, is to stand up and say no. To stand up and say no, state, you don't have the right to dictate to women and their families and their healthcare providers this very important, difficult, and personal decision. Thank you.
And, you know, this has gotten to the point where, you know, the Republican administration in this state has gone crazy. I mean, they come and lie and lie. They continue lying to us about everything. They come out and say that we're going to take care of these children. We know, and they're lying about that. I've been here, I'm 72-years-old, and I've seen what has happened here in the state of Texas. You know, we fought hard just to end segregation. And then, we had to fight even harder to just have mixed marriage. I mean, if I was Mexican, I could not marry a white or a black. You know, and that's, this is what this state has been all this time. And when people say we want to go back, I can tell you what going back to, and that's living in a segregated town and being poor all your life, with a second-level, second-grade-type, lower-class-type education. And that's what this state has done to us, you know? And now, they're trying to do, take away the rights of females? I mean, this is just one big lie that they keep telling us over and over, that we'll take care of you, just like they took care of all these mentally ill persons that are homeless out in the street. And that's how they take care of you. They don't even give a damn about you. That's what they do. So, I'm going to continue fighting this until I don't, until my last breath in this world, because this is just totally unjust as to what they're doing to us, us minority, low-income people, and forcing us to live in poverty for the rest of our life.
And last but not least, as far as the council goes, Mayor Adler, I just want to thank him for his leadership. I just have developed a great relationship with him over the last six months, and I really appreciate him putting the item with regard to vasectomies on there, because it is, as a man, it is our problem. Birth control is our concern also, and we need to take responsibility as well. Mayor Adler.
You know, I'm incredibly proud to be standing up here today with colleagues on the Austin City Council. But there is never a more proud moment when the Austin City Council stands up with our Austin legislative delegation at the same time. You know, when we all stand up together as a group, you know that it is an important and special moment. It's on days when we are standing up together, when Austin is truly being Austin, when our community is standing up together to do what is necessary to fight for what is right and for what is just, when there are fundamental issues that are at the forefront. A woman's right to be able to choose is a fundamental constitutional right. The Supreme Court got this wrong, and we have to continue as a community to stand up and say that loudly and repeatedly, because, quite frankly, cities across Texas expect our city, our area, to do that. There are cities across the country that expect our city to stand up and say that loudly. The language in the Grace Act right now is being passed by cities across the country, being used as model legislative language in cities across the country. That's Austin's role. That's our responsibility. Because the fact that the Supreme Court got it wrong on reproductive freedom and free productive rights and choice is beyond scary, because where does that stop? Based on the reasoning of this court, gay marriage is at issue and at stake. Where does this stop? The fundamental liberties as granted in the Constitution are at risk right now in our country, and given who it is that leads our state, at risk in our state. And our role, our role, our city's role, our region's role, is to be loud, to be consistent, to fight for justice and for equity and for what's right. I don't know about you, but when I look at this group gathered up here today, I am so proud to be an Austinite. Thank you.
And then let me introduce my state representative and friend, Cheryl Cole.
I stand here for, representing House District 46, and yes, I do go over to that pink dome and argue with those people day in and day out, and I do that with my precious colleagues and with the strong support of Austin's mayor and city council. I couldn't be more proud of this day and the work that they are doing to challenge the Supreme Court's decision and stand firm for Austinite. What are we going to do over there? Or how are we going to play defense? Well, we'll try to stop bills in calendars and committees. That's one of the things that we can still do, and work like heck with the city council and the citizens throughout the community and with our allies at Planned Parenthood to organize testimony to fight these bills. And we'll also work on the House floor. We'll file amendments, we'll bring up points of order, we'll just mobilize and mobilize and mobilize till we hopefully can make a difference. And then, on the offensive side, we will file bills that promote abortion rights, such as Rosie's Law. I plan on doing that again this session, and we will challenge them every road, every turn. We won't give up. So, thank you for allowing me to speak and go, city council of Austin.
Hey, everybody. My name is Salia Israel. I'm standing here today on behalf of the, not just the Texas House, but in particular, the mechanism by which we are going to fight, and that will be the Women's Health Caucus. One of our colleagues is missing here today, the chair of the Women's Health Caucus, and if we've learned anything about ourselves in the last year, it is that we are fighters. And this is a dark time in our nation's history, but Austin City Council today is providing us some light. I wanted to give a shout-out to my friends, councilmember Poole and Kitchen, who I have known since the '90s. I know that they speak with fierceness, because I've seen it for years and years and years. We have fought for years at the local level to make sure that we didn't have to have this day, but this day is upon us now. And it is very emotional to see the younger people behind me, because we have got to be in this fight together. This is your fight, and I'm very sorry about the situation that we're in, but we are with you. Knowing that you have a majority-woman council and that you have men like the mayor and councilmember Renteria and councilmember Vela, it is wonderful to know that you have our backs and that you are with us. As a four-term member of the legislature, I have seen Texas politicians chip away at a person's right to bodily autonomy. Unfortunately, this has always been a priority, as opposed to access to maternal healthcare, access to contraception, access to medically accurate sex education, and in the case of what we will be looking at next year, perhaps, how about supporting our foster care system and those who care for foster care kids? Now, the reckless Supreme Court decision has not only emboldened certain lawmakers to, but to fear and intimidate. The Women's Health Caucus, and I know my colleagues here will be here to fight. I would like to recognize my colleagues, Representative Tellarico, Representative Inahosa, Representative Cole, of course, and soon-to-be representative, we believe, Representative Lulu Flores from South Austin. I will not be back, but I wanted to speak up on behalf of the process, and the process is, we will fight by, and the Women's Health Caucus will be a part of that. We're not just alarmed, we're not just indignant, we are angry. We are angry. We are awoke, our claws are out, and we're ready to fight. As a community, we need to be a source of safety for the people who are suffering under this current climate. That is why it is so important that city council take action here today. Politicians in the House right now are already planning fringe policies that it's crazy to be saying these words, restricting the travel of women who want to go to another state to take care of their healthcare needs, punishing companies who assist women with traveling to other states to take care of their needs. This is not conservative principles. They are all up in my business, and I am sick and tired of it. I unequivocally support Grace. I support our city. We are grateful to be in partnership with you today. Austin is doing what it can to protect reproductive freedom, and I will say, local leadership matters now more than ever.
I would invite any of the other, if y'all want to say a few words, Representative Tellarico, Representative Inahosa, you're more than welcome, please.
Republicans want you to believe that your vote doesn't matter. We're preaching to the choir in a lot of ways. Those are our most engaged vote, but not enough of us vote, and that's why we're in this situation. Your vote matters. The only way this gets better is if you scare the people who did this to us. Two election cycles ago, the Texas House flipped, under the leadership of Salia Israel, 12 House seats. We didn't see trash like the legislation that passed to limit a right that a woman has to her body this last session. We didn't see trash like that pass this session after we scared them with our electoral power. We saw school finance reform bills. We saw work that actually put Texans first and made our lives better. So, this doesn't change unless everybody votes, every last person votes. That's the only way we get our rights back, get this state back, and get this country going in the right direction again. Thank you.
You know, we are in the middle of an emergency. Half the people in this room, half the people in this city, half the people in this state just became second-class citizens. Our neighbors, every one of our neighbors with a uterus just became the property of the state. And so, every leader at every level needs to use every tool in their toolbox to protect our freedom. And so, I am so thankful that we have fighters like councilmember Fuentes and councilmember Vela to protect our freedoms. Our state and our country are lucky to have leaders like y'all.
I just want to thank the members of the Texas delegation and the members of the Austin City Council. I'm Lulu Flores, and I'm the Democratic nominee for District 51, and I am very excited to work as hard as I can to make sure I get elected in November, to join this wonderful delegation, and to do my part for our city and our state. Ya basta. Enough is enough. We need to go out and vote. I intend to do everything in my power to get as many people out to the polls so that we can make sure that we, our rights are protected. I've worked on this issue for 40 years as a member of Planned Parenthood. I've worked on this issue for 40 years as a member of Planned Parenthood, as the president of the National Women's Political Caucus, and I am not going to stop now. My efforts are going to get even stronger and harder. So, si se puede, go do it.
It's just, it's so heartwarming to have the delegation here with council, working together, as we have done many times in the past and as we will continue to do in the future. Austin really is coalescing around a strong voice, not even just for local issues, but moving the statewide narrative and the national narrative, and I'm just so proud to be here. I want to ask Rocky Gonzalez if she wants to come and say a few words from the Austin Justice Coalition and the Frontera Fund.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Rocky Gonzalez. I am founder of Frontera Fund, which is an abortion fund that serves the Rio Grande Valley. I'm also the deputy director at Austin Justice Coalition. I'm standing here today with our executive director, Chaz Moore, and our organizing director, Joapolo Conley. We want to thank the Austin City Council for passing this important resolution. We are in solidarity with this work. We know that these archaic laws highlight the intersection of criminal and reproductive justice. Not only will abortion providers be criminalized under these archaic laws, but anyone who supports anyone else to find an abortion or get an abortion, which means you help a family member, you could be criminalized and categorized as an aider and a better for helping someone to get an abortion. Abortion funds across the state of Texas have been forced to cease operations, where we have served as a safety net, a healthcare safety net for Texans for many, many years. We have now been forced to cease all operations for fear of persecution and prosecution as aiders and abetors of abortion. We can ask folks who are new to the movement to stand in solidarity with us, to take the lead of the Austin City Council, and continue to pass these progressive and important protections for Texans across the state. And everyone can look forward to continued and aggressive advocacy to regain abortion access in Texas, to expand abortion access in Texas, because Roe was never enough, and to decriminalize abortion until abortion is good, free, and legal at any moment in time for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Texas Freedom Network, please. Emily Witt from the Texas Freedom Network is next.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Witt, and I'm the communications strategist for Texas Freedom Network, Texas Rising, and our program for progressive people of faith advocating for LGBTQIA+ equality and reproductive freedom, Just Texas. We are proud that the Austin City Council has passed initiatives to ensure that city funds will not be used to harass and prosecute abortion seekers or those who experience miscarriages and the providers who care for them. While the U.S. Supreme Court overturned Roe v. Wade, our local representatives have shown today what it means to put your community first by passing proactive initiatives to ensure we get access to the care that we need. Today, we firmly declare that access to abortion is a moral and social good. Abortion is healthcare, and abortion is a blessing.
Thank you very much. And Kristin Herring, please come on up. Another speaker to tell.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Herring, and when I was pregnant 13 weeks in 2017, I ended up having an incomplete miscarriage. My doctors lied to me and tried to tell me that we were healthy, but the truth was, my daughter was dying inside of me, and it was putting my life at risk. I had to use abortion care later in pregnancy. But I want to share today another story, one of my aunts, who in the 70s lived in Texas, actually not too far from here. She gave birth to a beautiful and unhealthy daughter who was in surgery, after surgery, since the day she was born. After months of trying to fight to stay alive, my aunt and uncle decided it was best to give their daughter grace by taking her off life support. On top of the grief of losing their only daughter, a disgruntled cowboy heard of their story and took my aunt and doctor to court, re-traumatizing my family members all over again and dragging other people down. When people who are capable of getting pregnant create life, we also guarantee death. Death is a part of life. No one knows that more than the people who are able to make life, because sometimes our children die before us, and sometimes our bodies become coffins. Creating life is hard enough. We don't need local terrorists coming after us, or the government breathing down our necks and investigating our miscarriages. We don't need the government to prevent us from obtaining maternal healthcare, effectively killing us while they cling to their guns and squawk pro-life. Grace is defined as courteous goodwill, with synonyms being thoughtfulness, decency, and respect. Guarding the right to abortion care for everyone, or the Grace Act, will give respect, decency, and grace back to Austin residents by protecting people who experience miscarriages and those who use abortion care, by banning city funds that investigate reports on abortion care. The Grace Act also places abortion care on low priority for our overseers, so they should be less motivated to target us. The bar is on the floor, y'all, but that doesn't mean we aren't out here trying to raise it, and I encourage y'all to join us. By passing this resolution, we are taking a step towards forming intersectional allyships that protect all Austinites and will make us stronger as we fight together against the rise of fascism. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin, and Annie Fierro, please.
Howdy, y'all. I'm Annie Fierro, the hall coordinator of Sonarise Movement here in Austin, and I'm pretty sure you're probably wondering, why is a Green New Deal t-shirt in an abortion hearing or something like that? And, well, let me tell you, usually it's immigrants, Black, Mountain, and indigenous folks who have to endure not only not having access to healthcare, but also are the first ones to experience a climate crisis. Kristin is one of her members, and in her state, she was denied healthcare. And also, her community has been mostly impacted before any of us here. And I'm pretty sure y'all have noticed that it's pretty hot outside. And also, I want to say, based on what everyone has said here, please turn out to vote in November. Pretty much, this is our way to show everyone, our state capital, that this is what Texas truly wants. This is who we are, and we have SBA'd, we had the Supreme Court, because they know we're coming, and they know where we're headed. And 10 people at our state capital are not who we are today. Really, we had counted here, it's more than those 10 people. So, just want to remind you all, we are powerful, and we are what Texas truly is. Thank you, y'all.
And then finally, Representative Doggett sent Courtney from his office to also offer a few words.
My name is Courtney. I am here as an Austinite and a mother who is drastically affected by the Supreme Court overturning Roe v. Wade, and I'm deeply appreciative for the Grace Act. I work with Congressman Lloyd Doggett, who recently participated on a panel with Councilmember Fuentes about our work together to protect reproductive freedom. Here are the congressman's words. With the Supreme Court's dangerous decision overturning Roe v. Wade, we must work together in taking every reasonable step to protect reproductive freedom. I strongly support the Grace Act and related efforts of our councilmembers to provide Austin women all of the relief possible. I led over 80 House colleagues in urging the administration to issue a public health and national emergency declaration on abortion. Such action would unlock powerful authorities to protect and expand access to medication abortion, improve surge capacity in safe haven states, and more. Last week, the House approved the Ensuring Access to Abortion Act and reapproved the Women's Health Protection Act, these bills of which I am an original sponsor, passed on near party-line votes to write into law the prior guarantees of Roe and prevent interference with those who travel to access abortion healthcare. Since Texas Republican extremists are already seeking to limit various forms of contraception, today, the House is approving the Right to Contraception Act, of which I am an original sponsor, to create a statutory right to contraception. Unfortunately, unless two senators who profess to be pro-choice, Kristin Sinema and Susan Collins, support a narrow carve-out to the filibuster for reproductive freedom, Republican obstruction will prevent these important bills from becoming law. Here in Austin, I'm continuously impressed with the creative leadership from our city council to protect Austinites from the many bad policies of Abbott and Patrick, who aren't pro-life but just pro-mandatory motherhood. Thank you to Councilmembers Vela and Fuentes for introducing the Grace Act, and all of you who are here supporting this important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our speakers, to all of our supporters, to everyone that is here, and we'll go ahead and open it up to questions. I look forward to the Texas Legislature taking up and passing those bills in the next session. It's a really good point, it takes two to tango, and we're all responsible for those final outcomes. We cannot put all of the legal, you know, financial burdens, medical burdens, on women. We, as men, as fathers, need to stand up and do what is right. All right, well, thank y'all very much. Folks are, of course, available for interviews afterward, although we're going to be returning to council here pretty quick for our last item. But again, thank you so much to everyone from the press for coming, and to all of
Thanks for sticking with us here on this Thursday afternoon. I'm Will Dupree in the KXAN Live Studio. We are reaching the end of that news conference called by the Austin City Council after a unanimous approval of this package of resolutions called the Grace Act. And you may have seen that on the signs there and heard them mentioned, and we're going to go through now what that all includes. So, if you're wondering what the Grace Act stands for, here's what that means. It's the Guarding the Right to Abortion Care for Everyone Act. That's where the acronym GRACE comes from. And let's go through what these resolutions that were approved unanimously do include. As you see right here, it amends the city code to prohibit discrimination on reproductive health related to housing and employment. It also limits city funds for gathering evidence about abortions and deprioritizes enforcement of criminal laws surrounding abortion. Another resolution does these two things. It directs the city manager to explore the idea of a public education program on long-term birth control, including vasectomies. And as part of this one, it ensures health insurance for city workers and their spouses covers low-cost birth control. Finally, one more resolution as a part of this package. It directs the city manager to now review and make recommendations on benefits for city workers to support access to reproductive health services that are not lawfully available in Texas anymore. We, of course, will be working to get some reactions from those who are against abortion rights and what their feelings are about this series of resolutions passed unanimously today by the Austin City Council, so please stay with us for that. We'll have updated information on our website, kxan.com, and on the KXAN News app. Thank you all again for watching here this afternoon. I'm Will Dupree in the KXAN Live Studio. We'll see you back here at another time with other updates, so please stay with us. Take care out there.